Present.
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 I recall county meeting the order and ask for the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Let me ask Commissioner Abraham if he'll lead us in the invocation tonight.
Father, we thank you so much for this time of year. It seems that everybody's a little bit nicer this time of year. Father, we realize that those of us that are believers, that the reason that we feel the way we feel is because of your son. Help us to continue to hold on to that feeling a little longer this time. Let it drift over into 2020 so we see each other the way you see us. These things we ask you to do.
Please stay standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All may be seated. All right, this time I'm going to break up Mark Thompson, the director of our Parks Department, for our program. Oh, hang on, I got one thing to say. We do have to have a city commission meeting at 5:30, so we will be trying to wrap this up around 5:25 and so we can reset for the commission meeting. Okay? Cheers.
Thank you, Mayor, County Judge, Commissioners on both sides. We're pleased to bring to you tonight the work of 11 months of a large committee led by Bacon Farmer Workman, Bran Seder Carroll, and Peck Flannery. And we are going to let Pat Hoagland of Bran Seder Carroll come up and kick us off on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you, Art. It's an honor to be with you here tonight, and thank you very much for inviting us to present the results of the 11 months of work. It's hard to get it all down to 10 minutes or so, so I'll be going through some of this fairly fast. Think of this as the most positive service that you provide for your citizens, Parks and Recreation, which helps people to enjoy their lives, helps businesses that want to come to Paducah and McCracken County, helps people stay healthy, gives them lifelong skills, sportsmanship, teamwork, all those types of things that help you throughout your entire life. So that's what we're here to help you improve upon for the city and the county here. This is a four-step process, the first part where we were evaluating the whole system, and then the most fun part, which was the engagement of the public, a lot of engagement is part of this. And then with that, we worked with the steering committee, which was a large group, but a very good group, that worked with us throughout to develop a new vision for the future. And then from that, developed the plan from that. So this plan is really based on what we heard from the citizens of Paducah and McCracken County. The public engagement is extremely important because that's where most of the recommendations come from. There was a statistically valid male survey that had 749 completed surveys. We wanted at least 600, so we felt really good about that. We had 483 from the city and 266 that were in McCracken County but outside of the city. We also had a web and handout survey that anybody could fill out rather than just that random sample, and we had 1,463, and you can see the numbers there, some were in Paducah. Pretty good split between Paducah and within the county, and some were outside the county. Had a great open house with 200 participants, and we thanked the schools for sending out a robocall the night before to get a lot of people out, or even that day. And then the extravaganza, the Easter egg hunt, we had 103 participants there, which is a totally different demographic group than we had at the public workshop. And then we had 17 stakeholder groups with about 80 people in those, so overall about 2,600 people that we contacted throughout this process, and they represent their families, which is even more. So we felt really good about the amount of engagement that we had in this process. Just a few quick, you know, I'll go through these fairly quickly, a few things on the surveys, the blue or the male survey, that's statistically valid, and the green is the web survey. Upgrades to existing parks, you see that the top things were new and improved restrooms. We see that all the time. Walking hiking trails, picnic shelters, drinking fountains, security cameras and lighting to make people feel more safe in the parks. And these are just some of the top ones on the list. We had several questions in the surveys that asked about the citizens' priorities for their families and also what their unmet needs were. When you put those two together, you come up with a series of priorities based on this. So the priority ratings for facilities showed walking and hiking trails at the top of the list, natural areas, nature parks, small neighborhood parks, indoor pools, paved bike trails, large community parks, playgrounds, and picnic shelters and picnic areas as your high priority items based on the survey results. And you see several others that are there for the medium priority results. What you notice is a lot of those family-oriented types of activities, things that you do with your family, that you do your entire life, come to the top of the list versus some of the sports activities. And that's pretty common that we see this, because you do this for your entire life with the sports you're typically doing for a much shorter period of time, but a very important period of time. And then in terms of programs, we did the same type of questions, and that the higher priorities were that the Riverfront Concert Series, adult fitness and wellness, the farmer's market, programs for people age 50-plus, and then nature programs were the highest priorities, and then several others types of programs. What you see are those types of activities that bring the community together are what we're seeing from these lists that people want, areas that people can gather and build community. So some of the other key public findings, upgraded your existing parks and indoor aquatic facility, trails, and extending the greenway was popular, more restrooms, the new rec center, preserving open space, more shade in both trees and structures, new playground equipment, picnic shelters, pickleball courts, athletic fields, and a complex for tournaments, both in terms of diamonds and rectangle fields. And then better support facilities, you know, security, lighting, drinking fountains, wifi, those types of things. Improved marketing and communications. One of the things we found out was a lot of people don't know what you're offering. That's why they don't use Parks and Facilities more often. So improved marketing, and that's a struggle for every department and every community. A riverfront park improvements and then expanded program offerings are some of the key things throughout all that public engagement. So from that, we brought all the different analysis and the public engagement together with the steering committee and worked with them over a couple meetings to develop a draft vision and mission, and then some goals and objectives. So the draft vision is amazing experiences, providing dynamic opportunities that promote a vibrant community, shape city character, enter a magnet for growth. And the mission statement for the department would be to energize community through exceptional parks and experiences. And keep it nice and short, everybody can say it. From that, we had a series of core values, and then there's, in the back of your handout, there's a whole detail that describes all of these. But the core things that are most important to keep in mind throughout everything that you do are health and wellness, building community, inclusion, not just in terms of people with special needs, but for all types of populations, fun, always keep it fun, safety, and then stewardship of the land and resources, are core values. So a few site concept plans that we have here. The first one is Noble Park, and what you'll see there is an adaptation of previous plans that had been done from the 2000 and 2007 master plan with one of the later renderings of the recreation center and the site on that site. So with that, there's, I don't know, point on here, if I can, yep. This area is a dog park up in the Annabomber area, and an expanded family aquatic center, which causes the removal of the basketball courts. Those would go up near the parking lots with the recreation center, an indoor aquatic facility, had some pickleball courts we're putting up there to supplement activities in the recreation center. You'll notice all around the perimeter of the park, or is a walking trail so that people don't have to walk on the road as they do now. Improved parking, improved restrooms, and then the whole peck addition area is a nature education area would be developed. So those are the key things that happen in Bob Noble Park. At Stewart Nelson Park, the idea there is to move some of the, if the recreation center goes in at Noble Park, then you'd need to develop those recreation facilities somewhere else, and this would be part of that whole sports commission study that's going on. So they may end up at another site, but if you did it at this site, you'd be redeveloping the larger fields for adult baseball and softball and older kids, and then for girl softball and little league would take place in this area where the dog park is now. That's going to take a lot of work. There is some floodplain issues in that area. You have some centralized parking that would go in there, and then some playgrounds and other picnic shelters throughout that area. Another concept is for the Lanell Park, that's up near Buckner Lane. This is a passive park. It's got some deed restrictions on it that you can't put any paving, any permanent paving on it, so it'd be a gravel trail. It'd be developed as a native species arborum. We developed this plan with comments from, I think, the West End Neighborhood Association. Playground would be a natural play area with, you know, rocks and logs and those types of things, whether the shelter for meeting, and tried to work with the neighboring church to see if we could use that for some parking rather than having parking on the site because we can't pave anything on it. One other site plan is a redevelopment of the Midtown Park, what was the Midtown Golf Course. In this case, we've got two large rectangular fields, soccer fields, or used for other things as well, in a small practice soccer field or for smaller children. Restroom building, basketball court, playground, a new shelter, and a trail around the perimeter of the park. And this would be working in conjunction with the soccer field that's there now for the high school. So it'd be in conjunction with the schools on this site. So the idea is there are really not any soccer fields within the city for kids to play. So this is one area we thought we could get a lot more use than that site gets now, making it more as a neighborhood park. The steering committee came up with a list, and we had 42 different capital improvements on it. We asked them to rank those. You know, three is really important, we want to do this right away, to zero, don't do it at all. So the top things on their list were, at all parks, providing ADA access for better accessibility to all the facilities through walkways, seating areas, and those types of things. Redeveloping Stewart Nelson was second. The new recreation and aquatic center was third. Improved the site's security with lighting and cameras and those types of things. At all the parks was fourth. New restrooms was fifth. The Riverfront Plaza Shelter Park was sixth. Replacing the county soccer complex, even though it's outside of the city, which was our focus on this plan, that's something that desperately needed. Redeveloping Midtown, playground replacements, and then shaded playgrounds. Those are the top 10. Again, in the master plan, you'll see the list of all 42 elements that the steering committee ranked. Then a few other areas, there was five goal areas, so the goals one and two were great parks and enhanced facilities, and also improved accessibility. I'm not going to read through all of these, because I think we've mentioned most of these elements before, but we categorized all of the different types of improvements. I think we mentioned most everything on there, completing the greenway, there's new neighborhood parks in some underserved areas, and I'll show you a map where those areas are. Loop trails in the parks, upgrading Paxton Golf Course was something that a lot of people came out to the public meeting and told us they'd like to see. That's those. And then this is a map showing, and those purple areas are some underserved areas. We had to do an analysis of the social needs and conditions in the community, and then also those unmet areas, with areas that don't have much Parks and Recreation facilities. And so some smaller neighborhood parks in these general areas that were shown on here would be helpful in the future. The steering committee did rank those fairly low, thinking that we should fix up what we have first before we start developing any new parks. Goal three was diverse programs and memorable experiences. So some of these are not on those other lists that we talked about before, but as you develop these new facilities, especially the recreation center, you'll be able to provide a lot more services than you're offering now. Lot more things for adults, for fitness, other program opportunities. You should be doing some more special needs programming because there's a need out there. More community events to bring that community together, which we mentioned as a result of those surveys. More creative and cultural arts programs. It's not all about sports. Expand the programming, not always, it doesn't have to be done by city staff. You can have vendors or contractors perform some of those services, and then you get a percentage of the cost of those, because there's some expertise that you may not have within the city staff. In terms of effective management, in goal four, need to engage the neighborhoods in those park improvement projects throughout. So those whole concept plans we showed, just showed what could fit on those. Each one of those, you should develop that plan in conjunction with the surrounding neighbors and the users of those facilities. You'd upgrade your technology, in terms of wifi and facilities for both for the staff and for the patrons that are using the parks. There's some mobile apps that you can use to enhance the park experiences, especially during some of your events. Working with that sports commission, the new sports commission on facilities and use of some of the new facilities that will be developed. Identify a consistent brand, and you've got a good logo now that can be used more, and develop that in your signage and your promotional materials. Expand your marketing efforts. Partner with healthcare providers, because that's a natural, all over the country that's being done, to promote healthy lifestyles. Utilize this master plan as a guide in your decision-making throughout the next 10 years, and update this plan as needed. And then goal five, efficient operations, improve maintenance at the parks, including some of your natural areas, because that's just to keep things looking fresh. Develop an operations plan with some maintenance standards in that, so it's clear what staff, what level of maintenance should be developed at each area. You maintain the grounds around City Hall different than you would a natural area in terms of your weed control and how often you mow it and those types of things. Need to understand the actual costs of the programs and services that you provide. So you need to take a good look at what it actually costs you, not just like if you're doing a baseball, what does it cost for the umpires and for dragging the fields and all that, so that you know you can price things based on what it actually costs. It takes some time and effort on the staff's part to do that, but that'll help you when you start pricing according to what you should be doing. Establish a Parks Foundation to help with funding some of these improvements. Expand efforts to obtaining sponsors for some of your activities and events and facilities, a long-term capital maintenance and replacement program for your equipment, and encourage continued training of the staff and professional development. You know, we see your staff going at the Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society Conference all the time, and some of them go to the national conferences, and they should, just to get more training and develop professionally. So with that...
I know that we were going to hear from some steering committee members, but I think we might want to turn it over to Q and A, if that's okay? Because we're running out of time very quickly, seven minutes. No...
And then we have a moment, then what they can...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Anyone have any questions?
I have one. Are we eliminating the outside basketball courts?
No, not yet. No.
Not yet?
No. If they are eliminated, there will be new ones put into place before they're eliminated.
I mean, this is Kentucky.
This is Kentucky. Absolutely.
No, there's, there's, there's four at Noble Park now, and we have, on that plan, there is four more shown on there.
And actually, there's some that are put right next to the new rec center in that.
That's, I would be harassed tomorrow at school.
There will be more.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're talking about.
We understand. Place before removal.
Does Tillman still play soccer, Richard, at Midtown?
The Dutton Field.
So is that the area you're talking about, developing there?
Yes. Next, next to.
Next door.
Yeah.
All right. Again.
So the two could work into one.
My daughter played soccer at Tillman.
Would that take the place of this golf course that's over there?
Yes. Yeah, that would be gone. You wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be a good mix of, but you'll get a lot more people using the soccer fields in the neighborhood park than you do playing foot golf, disc golf, and golf on that site.
And it's not even saying, you could still keep some disc golf along with that on the trail, walk the trail around there, on the perimeter.
Other questions? Commissioners? As your chance. No?
We just heard.
You just heard a listen? Wow! Well, I have one then. Okay, Commissioner.
I was interested in the pickleball replacing the basketball court.
Nope, 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 we're not doing that.
Commissioner Wilson has a question.
How does this tie in with a sports commission? Because, you know, this has Stewart Nelson being developed differently than what I was, I guess, anticipating that we might do with a sports commission. They might be putting in ball fields.
This is a recommendation to them, well, if we, it depends on how a lot of things are used in the long term.
Can you speak in the microphones? People...
I was just trying to say, people can't hear at home.
I'm sorry, yes. It depends, it's, one depends on the other. You just can't, it's kind of a domino effect. If you build it this way, and one of the things they talked about was actually putting eight fields from the sports commission when we were at least doing some initial drafts in the discussions of it, to put some softball, baseball fields there in Noble Park.
At Stewart Nelson.
I mean, Stewart Nelson Park, yes.
So it is coordinating with...
It could, it could absolutely, that could work absolutely with that if that were one of those options.
Again, and the follow-up on part of her question, I mean, with what's, what we're looking at here to have tournament play is probably not enough, so... I mean, will we have someone come in and look at and tell us how many fields you need?
I think that's part of what the sports commission's going to be working on, so it'll go hand in hand.
Well, this is, this is not something that's set in stone.
No, absolutely. And there's no funding for any of this. This is all recommendations, something to look forward to over the next 15 years.
The way I see it is, well, the sports commission's already gotten to work. I mean, they're interviewed the designers and architects, and are about to choose a designer and architect to keep moving forward with that big, larger plan. This is a 15-year Parks Master Plan. If that doesn't happen, or maybe even they can use some of the information to inform their decisions as they move forward also. That's kind of how I see it. I don't think any, if this is actually, the only thing set in stone is that recreation center, where it's going. I mean...
Exactly, and they worked, they worked together with that, too. But one of the things is, like, the softball fields, as you see them, those are multi-use fields as well. They can be used for, even the large fields can be used for smaller fields, like a 200-foot field for fast pitch softball or under 12 baseball. They can all be used in those manners. So we could actually have eight fields for the fast pitch softball or the younger age group baseball. So some of those types of things, and it'll be a hand in glove type of situation. One of the options is, if they aren't built, and we take away the fields in Noble Park, we will still have to develop some here locally at some point.
That's what I was about to say.
To take care of the inner-city kids that are playing.
If the site selection lands somewhere farther away from the urban core...
Right.
The city is going to have to figure out how to...
How to help.
How to help serve the leagues, the small leagues, and things like that. Yeah.
That's right. So it'll have to be there in some form or fashion.
Questions? You have one? Why is your microphone way up there?
Because I wasn't going to talk.
Oh.
I'm here to listen.
Okay, well, just to make sure I'm on the right page here. So the aquatic center and the recreational center, that's happening, and that's going where the core league fields are present, right? Okay, so Commissioner Wilson, prior to the sports commission and that conversation, we're going to entertain tournament-quality ball fields, and we're going to bring our Stewart Nelson up to speed with the wagon wheel display and all of that. That's kind of like not our thing anymore. That's kind of pushed off, the sports commission is going to kind of pick that up. So now, it's like, well, they can pick that up, but if we still obviously have a need in inner city for ball fields, so we'll come back later and try to put something together there. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think if, I think if this is the site chosen from the engineers and the process of the sports commission, then we should have a conversation about sharing in the future, like, we should have that conversation. How do we put agreements together where there's some recreation play on there, on which weekends is that possible? There's a lot of details to figure out. That's the partnership I would see, right?
And I can, I can share with you that in the, in the meetings that we had with the sports commission when they were doing their selection process, both groups who they interviewed recommended that they be a shared facility, that particularly the locals would play on it midweek, the Monday through Fridays, and then the weekends would be resolved for tournament play, is one of the things they talked about.
So, and like in the paper, you're talking about the re-establishment of the little league.
Correct.
Building that up. So once you break ground on the aquatic center, does that take place in at Stewart Nelson?
Then we move it to Stewart Nelson.
We do have those fields available for that.
We also have the fields, the softball field over at Shepherd Field and next to Brook Stadium, that is ours to use also during, when the girl softball, high school girl softball's not used.
So all of that can still, I mean, obviously, I knew it could, but it would have been in there.
We'll still have at least five fields right now, as we sit, to be able to use. Correct.
You'll have five fields when the recreation, when you build the recreation center, will you still have five fields?
Yes.
That's, that's at Stewart Nelson?
Well, we have four at Stewart Nelson and one at Shepherd.
Great.
And we also have some areas that we can redevelop, like at Coleman Park and some other places, that we can actually do some other things, for some T-ball. Yes.
Well, I didn't, we didn't get to call the steering committee members up, but I know you're in the audience, so thank you all so much for serving on that. I know it's been 11 long months.
Troy and Ann were here to say something.
Excellent. Thank you for being here. We appreciate that a lot, and your work that you put into this to make it meaningful for our community. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thanks, Commissioner Bartman, for this idea of listening together. I did, I know you might already have Mark Thompson's contact, but just in case you didn't, I gave you their cards, so we can keep this conversation going afterwards as well. Okay. I'm going to call this, make a motion to adjourn the city meeting. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned for the city.
Motion for us to adjourn. Any discussion in favor?
Excellent. Excellent.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Are we rearranging?
Are you okay with that? All right, now that we're in session, there she comes. Welcome to the stage, Commissioner Wilson.
I know.
All right, call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight?
May we pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for Christmas. We know you are the author of the best gift we've ever received, and we thank you for the many gifts we enjoy. Our community, we are so blessed, the many friends and family, coworkers, the opportunity to work, the first responders that care for us, the teachers that teach our children, we are extremely blessed. But we know the greatest gift is a gift of your son. And we pray, as we go through our day, as we make decisions, as we interact with family and friends and neighbors, that we would let our lives be just an offering to you in thanks and gratitude. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I'm going to be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we need to delete the discussion item tonight for the first-quarter financial report. We will have that ready for the Board of Commissioners at first meeting in January.
Can you tell me which item that is?
That is, that is item under Revenue Rule 4A, Discussion A, Quarterly Financial Report.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, tonight we have some new employee introductions, and I'll let the city manager do that for us.
I'll turn that over to Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am very excited to introduce to you our new HR Director, Stephanie Sawazo. I'm going to move this down a little bit. So she is an accomplished HR professional. She has expertise in all things HR and brings a great skillset to the city, so we're very happy to have her. She's a graduate of Indiana University, and she actually worked for a municipality in Indiana, so she comes with some municipal experience. Most recently, she's worked at Peale and Holland, so please join me in welcoming her, and we're very happy to have her.
Welcome, Stephanie.
And then I'll turn it over to Chief Laird for the new records clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Happy to present to you tonight Sabrina Miller and Mary Farrell. They've been hired as new records clerks for the police department, so when you come in the lobby of the police department, you'll see them. Hopefully, if you're coming there for a meeting for me, hopefully you're not coming there to pick up a collision report or a crime report. Sabrina is a graduate of Murray State University and comes to us with several years' worth of customer service experience working in the local banking industry. She lives here in the area with her husband and her son. And Mary is also a graduate of McCracken, I'm sorry, of Murray State University, and she was most recently employed by the Humane Society here in McCracken County, where she worked as a veterinary assistant for about a year and a half. And she lives here in Paducah. So it's Sabrina and Mary.
Welcome to the team. Chief, I want to know if the elf is coming to our meeting.
Oh, that would be great.
Ah.
Great.
Okay. Not next time, because it's going to be after Christmas, and the elf goes back on the shelf.
Very nice.
Okay, next year. All right, I'm going to ask, I think Molly Tomasillo and Mark Thompson to come up and give our Christmas Parade Awards. Before we do that, can we give the Parks Department a huge round of applause? I love feeling like we're in the set of a Hallmark movie. It's my favorite moment of the whole year. Thank you for all the work that you do.
You're welcome. Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, and parade participants. I'd just like to say a few words before we get started here. Every year, I think probably the Christmas Parade is one of my favorite events to do, and everybody's always like, well, why do you, you know, and it's, we do always have the Santa float at the end of the parade, but it also gives us a chance to see everybody's faces and to see everybody's enjoyment as the night goes on. So this was the sixth year that we've done the parade since I've been here and in charge of it, and I can easily say it was the biggest parade, both entries as well as probably crowd. So that's fantastic when you can kind of see that trend every year getting bigger and bigger. We had so much community participation this year, coming out from everywhere. So that's something we would love to see again, of course, next year, every year. But it really meant a lot for everybody to come out. They put a tremendous amount of effort into their floats, and just the community spirit that they have. So in addition to these trophies here and our awards that we list usually, we have also started a new tradition for the Community Spirit Award as well, because in the whole mix of all of these, theme floats, religious floats, non-float division, there are still some that maybe not, don't fit that category, or some that aren't really trying to compete, but they're just, you can't forget them. So we just wanted to recognize that. Without further ado, I will get started here. Bear with me.
Start at the bottom, third place.
Okay. We're going to go the themed float division here, and we'll try to go through this as fast as we can. I've spoken to several of you out there. What we'll probably do is, you can send a person or a couple people up to get the award, then sit back down, and after we get everybody's awarded to them, we'll all step out downstairs, and we can get pictures out there and that type of thing. That way you guys can continue with the meeting, and we'll be good to go.
Sounds good.
Does this sound okay? Okay. Fifth place, themed float division, we have Cub Scout Pack 2018. Fourth place, we have BFW Engineering. Hey, look at that. Third place, we have Paducah Power Systems, and I believe, oh, yeah, okay. I didn't know if they were able to make it tonight. They called and said they might not be able to, so I'm glad they did. Thank you.
That's nice.
Second place, Highland Cumberland Presbyterian Church.
Tea hat.
I know.
And our first place for the themed float division goes to Dippin' Dots. I just want to say, all of these top five, I mean, it was, it was so hard to, to really choose. We had some great judges this year, so we really hope they got in there and got a chance to talk to you about your construction and your, your overall theme altogether. And the theme again this year was Christmas celebrations around the world. So it was up to interpretation, but we had so many great interpretations. Okay, on to the religious float division. Third place, we have Trinity United Methodist. We'll get that to them this week. Second place, we have West Kentucky Christian Alliance. And in first place for the religious float division, we have Broadway Church of Christ. All right, on to the non-float division. Third place goes to Goodwin Farms. Second place goes to the Academy of Movement and Performing Arts. And first place goes to Melray Balloons. I already have people that can't wait what you come up with next year, so. All right, school float division. We have a first place, McNabb Elementary Junior Beta Club. On to the drill team division. In third place, we have Paducah Quickstep Cloggers. Second place goes to Center Stage Dance Academy. And...
Oh, she's talking.
First place goes to SAV Dance.
Do you say it, Dave?
No. SAV Dance.
Yes, SAV.
Yeah, gotcha.
There we go. Congratulations. Want to make sure you get the...
Okay, we're narrowing it down here. Band division. Second place, Paducah Tillman Band of Blue. And first place, McCracken County High School Band. And I think the McCracken County Band, didn't you guys all have on, like, ugly sweaters and lots of flashing lights? And I mean, it was great. Okay, and this year's Community Spirit Award, I just want to say that in going around and talking to all the floats, and kind of getting to know the process and how they were made, this was just amazing. It was 7,000 pounds. I can't even imagine the number of weeks that it took to construct and to build, but they're right here in our backyard and a staple to this community. And this year, it goes to Ingram Barge Company. If you didn't get a chance to see their float of an actual, I think it was a tow, right? Was it a tow?
A boat.
A boat.
More boats.
The big boats. We're already working things out to get it displayed for the 4th of July, since they are one of our sponsors for our toes, so that would be great, have people be able to come up and actually take a close look at that, because we're really cool. So, thank you again.
And it is, if you want to watch, there's two ways to watch it. One is on YouTube, and the other is on the drone shot, Paducah Drone, where they have a...
Fast-forward.
Fast-forward. It speeds up. You can watch it in about five minutes.
Yeah.
First hour.
And you see them turning, turning the corner at Broadway and Second. So it's really cool. Vic's done a great job with that.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. Congratulations, everyone. I'm going to give you a chance to stand up and go on before we keep going with business, unless you want to stay and listen to the exciting stuff that we're doing. I'm going to say something, yeah. All right, while we're waiting, just a reminder, if you are here to make a comment about anything on the agenda, there are forms over by the door, and they go in this box by the city manager. So if you have something you want to comment on, try to do that sooner than later, so I can make sure I rearrange the order of business to get you up here to speak. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove tonight for discussion? No? All right, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approved minutes for the December 10th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with Midtown Alliance of Neighbors in an amount of $140,000 for operating funds and affordable housing construction and repair, a municipal order declaring the real property located at 164 Clement Street to be surplus property, accepting the bid of James Harden in the amount of $350 for purchase of said property, and authorizing the mayor to execute the deed and all documents related to same.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-6-8578, entitled, an ordinance adopting the city of Paducah, Kentucky, annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government, and authorizing the Finance Director to make payment to the United States Army Corps of Engineer Louisville District. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020, ordinance number 2019-6-8578, be amended by the following reappraisal: Transfer $687,900 from the fiscal year 2020 general fund reserve to the flood wall cash match project account. Further, this ordinance authorizes the Finance Director to make payment to the United States Army Corps of Engineer Louisville District in the amount of $687,895, in accordance with the project partnership agreement for the city of Paducah's local flood protection project.
Second.
Anyone have any questions, concerns? We talked with Rick Murphy about this last meeting. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing a contract amendment with Evarde Strang Construction Company in an amount of $16,951... of $16,951.32 for the Pat and Jim Brockenborough Rotary Health Park Phase II project, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is authorized to execute a contract amendment with Evarde Strang Construction Company for an increase in the amount of $24,451.32, a decrease in the amount of $7,500 for an add increase to the contract in amount of $16,951.32 for the Paducah Health Park Phase II project. Prior to amending the contract, the mayor must receive lien waivers provided by the contractor from each and every subcontractor hired to perform labor or provide materials for the Paducah Health Park Phase II project.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the forgiveness of a loan owed by the Paducah Golf Commission and repealing ordinance number 2013-12-8109, and ordinance number 2015-1-8208, which authorized and modified the loan between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Golf Commission for capital improvements to Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course. This ordinance approves the forgiveness of a certain promissory note owed by Paducah Golf Commission, also known as Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board, to the City of Paducah for a certain capital improvements needed for the preservation of Paxton Park Municipal Golf, a city-owned municipal park, and repeals the initial ordinances approving the financial assistance. The forgiveness is necessary due to current financial challenges encountered by the Golf Commission due to inclement weather. This ordinance also approved and authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver to the Golf Commission the forgiveness of debt agreement which evidences this forgiveness.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? No? Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing the Paducah Creative and Cultural Council. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes the Paducah Creative and Cultural Council by adding sections 2-581, 2-582, 2-583, and 2-584 to the Paducah Code of Ordinances. This council shall be comprised of five citizens, the Paducah Director of Planning, the Paducah Neighborhood Project Planner, and the Paducah Grant Administrator. This ordinance outlines the method by which council members shall be appointed and the role and function of the council. Council members shall serve without compensation and shall not incur any indebtedness to be paid by the city.
Second. I have already started getting applications for this, even though it's not established until tonight. So, I've gotten, actually, probably three or four people reached out to me, say they want to, they're interested. So, any other comments or discussion? No? All right, roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Paducah and Louisville Railway, Inc. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Paducah and Louisville Railway for conveyance of their property located near Adams Street, Jackson Street, and Tennessee Street, whereby the Paducah and Louisville Railway will convey such property to the City of Paducah. Following satisfactory inspection, environmental assessment, and zoning certification, the mayor is further authorized to execute a quitclaim deed for conveyance of the property, together with all the other documentation necessary to transfer the property.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
No? All right, roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Commonwealth Economics Partners LLC in an amount of $43,824.80 plus direct expenses in an amount not to exceed $4,000 for consulting services related to the Tax Increment Financing TIF program for the Paducah Riverfront Development Project. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Commonwealth Economics Partners LLC for the Tax Increment Financing TIF program. This agreement is in the amount of $19,824.80 for services rendered since June 2019, plus $4,000 per month not to exceed $24,000, for a total base contract amount of $43,824.80 plus direct expenses in an amount not to exceed $4,000.
Second.
Any discussion about this item tonight? No? All right, roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner McElroy?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance regarding the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency and designating members of the Paducah Planning Commission to serve as joint members on both agencies. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency was established by resolution on February the 23rd, 1960. This ordinance creates a new section in Chapter 34, Article 6 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to establish the URCDA in said code of ordinance. The URCDA will be combined with the Planning Commission, and that the five members appointed to the URCDA shall be members of the Planning Commission, with the remaining members of the Planning Commission serving as alternate members. This ordinance further appoints the following members of the Paducah Planning Commission to the URCDA: Kathy Karusius, David Morrison, Valerie Pollard, Lorraine Shermacki, and Bob Wade. The powers, functions, and duties of the URCDA and its authority shall be in conformity with the KRS Chapter 99.330 to 99.510 as amended from time to time.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances to address the nuisance of junk motor vehicles. Junk motor vehicles which are apparently abandoned or apparently inoperable as defined by the ordinance shall be fined at a rate of $100 for the first occurrence, 30 days after final order or waived of hearing, and be subject to tow at owner's expense for the second occurrence, 60 days after final order or waiver of hearing. Exceptions shall include classic or collector cars, vehicles, compliance by removal of the vehicles by the owner within seven days after receipt of the notice of violation from the city shall be considered compliance, and no further action or fine shall be imposed against the owner. The full text of each section that imposes fees shall be published in accordance with KRS 838.060.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with Bacon Farmer and Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., in the amount of $5,000 for the Paducah Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one in an amount of $5,000, Bacon Farmer and Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., for work related to the addition of McCracken County residents and the statistically valid survey for a new total contract amount of $107,500.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Mayor Commissioners, this was an addition that we made after we started the Park Master Plan. As y'all recall, this was before there was any Sports Commission, before there was any of all that, and we thought, in order to get the best numbers possible for the master plan, that it was only right to include those county residents, and we added 1,000, 1,200 more surveys that went directly to the county-only residents.
Any questions for Mark? I think that was the right thing to do. Glad we did it.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the City Commission introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance repealing Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, which governs cable communications and replacing it in its entirety. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance repeals the existing Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah and replaces it in its entirety. Changes include applicable law as a new defined term, which includes any and all local law, state, or federal law, statute, charter, ordinance, regulation, code, franchise, permit, judgment, or decree in accordance with state and federal law. A stronger, more detailed gross revenues definition has been included to ensure maximum franchise fee payments to the city regarding cable service. The language in the complimentary services section has been revised and requires each franchise granted by the city to specify complimentary services as necessitated by recent action of the Federal Communications Commission. The report section has been revised to allow the city to review a franchisee's books and records necessary to ensure compliance with the terms of a franchise agreement. The city the right to request and review maps and enforcement by the city if a franchisee does not comply with this section. Revisions were made to the franchise fee section to reflect a 5% franchise fee paid to the city quarterly, 45 days after the close of each calendar quarter. Revisions were also made to reflect the city's right to inspect the franchisee's records and to audit any amounts due under the franchise, the ordinance, and applicable law, as well as language regarding resolution of any disputes regarding audit results. The emergency alert section has been revised to comply with changes in technology and applicable law, including federal regulations and any Kentucky emergency management requirements. The section related to the Paducah Cable Communications Authority has been deleted in its entirety as this entity no longer meets.
Second.
Pam Spencer has been working on this for a long time on our behalf.
Long time, yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. That motion does summarize a lot of the changes in Chapter 22. Chapter 22 is a large section of our code that is, it governs cable communications, cable operators within the City of Paducah. Currently, we have Comcast, that's non-exclusive franchise. We could have other cable providers come in if they choose, and this ordinance would govern their operations. We've been working significantly with Comcast since July 2017 to negotiate a new franchise. If you may remember, our other franchise expired at the end of '16, and we have been operating on a month-to-month franchise. The reason it's taken so long to get to this point, there was some changes in state law. The Kentucky Supreme Court had a ruling that allows now cities to levy a franchise fee. Before, we couldn't do that. So, we've now changed our code to add that, and we are working with Comcast on our franchise, which will include the franchise fee. Also, there was an FCC ruling that made some changes to some of the federal laws, so we needed to make sure that our code reflected all of these changes. But the main change that you'll see in this chapter is the franchise fee. Before, it just basically had a sentence in there that said, "If there was ever a change, that we could levy a franchise fee, we could." But now that we can, we've had to add a huge section of how to levy it, how to gather it, and to define annual gross revenue, which is what this fee is based on. So, Comcast and our attorney and I have been working together to make sure that we had a clear, concise definition of gross annual revenue, so that there was no question, so that we could maximize our fee that would be coming in. So, this is the first step as we're moving forward. Comcast has been working really well with the city. We needed to do the ordinance first because the franchise will reference our ordinance in the agreement with the franchise. Then, according to state law, we have to put this out to bid. It is a franchise. So, early next year, once we move through this ordinance process, it will be placed out to bid. More than likely, our only bidder will be Comcast. And then, we'll come before this body with a franchise agreement, which will reference this ordinance. So, it's a lot of steps, but we're to the end. It's exciting.
Congratulations. Do you have any idea what the proposed revenue will be for us? Any guesses, ranges?
There are some guesses, based on what Comcast has told us. It should be significantly more than what we're receiving in the telecommunications tax. Right now, we have been relying on what the state is gathering and sending to us, which the telecommunications tax is about a quarter of a million of what we're getting. We're hoping that it's going to exceed $300,000. So, we're hoping that this will be a little revenue boost for us.
Great news.
That's good.
Any questions for Pam? Comments?
I wish we could have a contract that would require them to offer programming à la carte, where people could just buy the stations they wanted and not get 500 channels that duplicate each other and you never watch.
That is a difficult question to address. That's more of a Comcast business kind of question.
It's a dream, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Just like his Corvette comment last year.
Right.
I tried it in Frankfurt and didn't have any luck either. They argued, their lobbyists argued, "That's a federal issue. You'll just wind up in court."
Well, a lot of our big questions that we get has to do with rates, and cities really can't regulate rates. We can regulate, based on the FCC, a base tier rate if we choose to, and Comcast does offer a basic tier, a low-end package that just has a few channels. They have that basic tier, so that's about all a city can try to regulate as far as rates. But we do have, in this ordinance, there's all the service providers. They have to maintain an office in Paducah. They have to have certain protocols in how they respond to service requests. So, there's a whole list of things like that that we are maintaining in this ordinance. So, any cable provider would have to follow those.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into comments from the City Manager.
I have none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from the Commission tonight? No?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
And happy birthday to me tomorrow.
Where are our Santa hats?
Oh.
Santa hats.
We were?
Yeah.
Oh, bummer. Next year, the elf will be here, and we'll have Santa hats.
See, a big day.
All right, and we have no public comment tonight?
None, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion for us to adjourn.
All right.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
See you next year. Yeah.